You all ready?
Let's do it.
Welcome, everyone. This is the December 6, 2022 Springdale Planning Commission Meeting. If you would, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation before we get started.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we come before you tonight just to ask for your guidance and wisdom as we make decisions on behalf of the city, Lord. We ask that you be with all of the men and women in our force, Lord, as they are away for the holidays and people that miss them. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Roy. All right, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the roll call.
Howard Austin.
Here.
Ray Cardell.
Mark Cloud.
Here.
Gary Compton.
Here.
Roy Covert.
Here.
James David. Shannon Mueller.
Here.
Peyton Parker.
Here.
Dale Tyler.
Here.
I hear a motion to approve the minutes for November 1, 2022.
I'd so moved, Dale.
Motion by Dr. Compton.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mueller. Oh, yeah. All in favor, say aye. Minutes are approved. We'll start with, this is other. Downtown Master Street Plan, 2015 Downtown Update, presented by Patsy Christie.
Okay, as you all know, we've kind of been through the last year working on an update to our 2015 Downtown Master Plan. We've had a series of public meetings. We had a series of charrette, not really charrette, but public input sessions. We've had lots of input. I, for someone who's worked in planning all my life, to see as many people show up as we have in these is really pretty exciting. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through it. The master plan will be online starting tomorrow if the Planning Commission is recommending it for approval. So you can have a chance to go through it. The idea is to take it to City Council next Tuesday evening. One of the highlights of this plan is to show the things that we've accomplished. And you see on this, on this list of the 2015 implementation plans that we, that we thought we were going to do. We've accomplished a lot of them. A lot of them are underway. So we feel really good about what we, what we were accomplished in that seven-year timeframe and ready to move on. There's a lot of really good things going on in downtown. The emphasis of the downtown plan was to address housing and parking, which is things that we really didn't emphasize in the last plan. But we realized that we've got to have a strong housing market in downtown to help maintain it. And we've always wanted to have a parking problem. We want that many people in downtown that we have a parking problem, but we don't want to wait till the last minute and figure out what to do with the parking. So we're trying to implement, and we've identified in the master plan some locations for some parking structures from surface parking that are both for the public sector and for the private sector. And those are all included in the master plan itself. H3 Studios out of St. Louis was our consultant, put together a very good plan for us, a very good look at where we've been and where we're going. The downtown Springdale Alliance was a great partner in that they helped us do a great citizen participation process to get people involved in that. So if anybody has any questions, this is a public, a public hearing, so we're taking comments. If anybody has any comments they want to make on the downtown master plan, now's the time. Don't everybody stand up at one time. We would like for you to go to the mic and kind of identify yourself if anybody wants to make comments. Anybody, does that, oh, here comes Jill. She'll make a comment for us.
I do want to say one thing. In 2015, when the city of Springdale passed their first downtown master plan, I was in central Arkansas, was in no way connected to Springdale in any way. And people throughout the state told me downtown Spring, Springdale just passed the best downtown master plan we have in the entire state. I was interested in urbanism. I was interested in downtown development and walkability and biking. And, and so I've never forgot that. And after working here for almost four years now, I know exactly what they're talking about. It is a very strong plan. This is, I think Patsy Christie gets a lot of credit for this. She does an incredible job, and thank you all so much for supporting us.
Thanks, Jill. Takes a team to do that. Can't do it by myself. There's a lot of players in this downtown, what's been going on. Is there anybody else that's got any other comments about the downtown master plan? What we need is a motion to move this forward to recommend to City Council for approval of the updated downtown master plan.
Sub motion.
Mr. Cloud. Motion by Mr. Cloud, second by Mr. Covert.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardell.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker. Tyler.
Yes. Passes eight zero.
Thank you, guys, and we'll take it to council next Tuesday evening. Okay?
Next is Amendment to the Springdale Code of Ordinances, presented by Ernest Kate.
Well, I think I'm doing this for Ernest. I don't think Ernest is going to be here. Basically, what we have is an amendment to the ordinance on assigning address numbers and how we change the process of changing names and addresses. All this has to go through our IT department anyway, because they maintain our G I S maps and the 911 system. And instead of having a system in between where it has to come to planning and then we send it to IT, this is going to put all the responsibility on IT, which is always good for me if you give it to somebody else who's responsible. So when there's a problem, you just send it to another department. So that, that works for us.
Yeah, if anybody wants to take it over from me, I'll be happy.
No, Clayton, sorry. We won't let you do that. Do you have anything else that you want to tell us about this?
I know, basically what you said is it kind of mimics what we already do in practice. Add some timelines in terms of staff responsibility and kind of sets expectation for people requesting addresses. What's happening in the 911 community right now is, we just continue to be subject to more and more standards that add complexity to it, and having that timeline helps us get those things right the first time.
Most of the assignment of addresses and stuff are done online. There is an online form that you can request an address or an address change. Clayton works directly with the post office as well. That has its own challenges on its own.
Right. We're currently notifying about 20 different organizations. And we are community partners with Google as well as in a roundabout way through Bean and some other third-party mapping.
It's a different world than it used to be when you came down to the water department, you got your address and you hung the number, the number on your door, and the water department and the fire department knew you were good. It's a little bit more complicated than that.
Quite a bit different. It's not going to get easier.
Yeah, okay. So this, again, is a public hearing. Is there anyone that have any comments or questions about transferring this from the planning department to the IT department? Basically, what we're doing. Do I have any questions or comments? Again, we need a motion to recommend this to the city council. The council had it at committee meeting last night, so they know what we're trying to do. But by, by the ordinances currently in place, the Planning Commission has to hold the public hearing. And so that's what we're doing. When this goes into place, the council will hold a public hearing, so y'all don't have to be hearing it anymore either. One less thing on your plate, too.
Motion to move to council as stated. Both from Mr. Covert.
Second.
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 And a third.
Pick one.
You pick either one.
We'll go with Mr. Cloud.
Cardell. Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Thank you.
Moving on to the tabled items, we'll start with L 2262, Second Nature Landscaping, with a variance B 22106 for paving requirement, presented by Swolpe Engineering.
Phil Swolpe, we spoke last time about this project. Really just trying to go for a lot split, but we have a little bit of construction involved as far as extending a little driveway across the creek there. At the last meeting, you guys asked to see what was ultimately planned in the back, and that's what we've provided in that drawing here.
Staff comments?
We have standard comments for a large-scale development. There was a variance requested for the paving requirement and a comment from November that we were wanting a definitive answer in describing the order of subsequent development and the intended date of completion to address commercial design standards.
Engineering comments?
Engineering's comments are mostly leftover from last month. It's a Smith revised drainage report shows sod in the pond on the landscape plan. The excess easement shown will need to be dedicated per informal plat or separate instrument. I need to submit a floodplain development application, show the BLE information on the plans for the floodplain, and revise floodplain statement and correct firm panel referenced. Nothing that's out of hand there, just leftover comments.
Okay, so have any of those comments been addressed yet?
Those are things we plan on handling before construction.
Well, okay. I think one of the questions we ask, and you'll have to refresh my memory because I talk about a lot of projects. Thought we were eliminating one driveway. What happened?
We, we will be. We're not doing, and maybe it was confusing, but we're not planning any development at this time. We're planning on extending the driveway in and getting over the creek there. At some point in the future, he is planning on doing all the rest of this project, as well as an additional building behind the house. But there's really, the reason for the variance of the park, of the paving is because we're not planning on doing the full development now. There's no building proposed. There's no full parking lot proposed. All we want to do is get to an informal plat like, like Ben said, to be able to split the property and have a shared driveway there. When the full project's done, yes, we'll eliminate the driveway. We'll build a building. We'll build a parking lot. Everything will be complete at that time.
Okay, so in order to split the lot, Ben, do we still need the drainage report? We need the, that information that you asked for last time, or is that related to a large scale?
Well, since the driveway's going over the floodplain, yeah, we would need all that.
Okay. So basically, we're at a point where we've got to have that information before we know with a lot split. And technically, it's not a lot split. It's changing a lot line, correct? Okay, can you go back to the drawing before that has it marked? And, but you want to build that access easement, but you don't want to pave it now?
No, no, we're fine to pave that. We didn't want to, there's some other gravel areas, storage areas on the site that, that would have to be paved once the full development happens, and we don't want to, we just want to build this driveway. We'll pave that driveway.
Okay, so why is there a variance for a paving requirement then if you're not going to pave anything and you're just doing the driveway? Where this, this thing is very confusing.
It is to us, too, absolutely. Because the comment came back from planning that we had to pave all the areas that were gravelled today. And so we were told we had to submit a variance for that.
Were you expanding the use of parking vehicles from where you have been from the time this opened?
No, we will not.
So the areas that are on here are already gravelled?
Yes, they are.
Ben, are you comfortable with this moving forward without that information being provided?
I, I think I am as far as just, we're not going to let them go forward with building this driveway until we have all that flood information taken care of. But that usually comes after the informal plat anyway. So, yeah, I think, I think we're okay with going forward.
Okay, so all of those things, not counting the variance for the paving of the use areas on there, just for the lot split, you're comfortable if those, if the Planning Commission moves this forward with the understanding the lot split won't be ready to be signed or anything until that, all that's addressed?
Yes.
Okay, does that make sense? Okay, let's, let's deal with that first. Okay?
Large scale first?
Well, technically, it's really not a large scale, because basically it is a lot split that we're approving and allowing an access to be shared, to be paved. If you're not doing any buildings or anything on that lot, I am uncomfortable with approving a large scale and giving variances if we don't know what buildings and stuff you're going to do on there. Can you go to the next drawing? Because it shows some parking lot areas and, and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, yeah, we didn't intend to show this, but we were asked to provide it at the last meeting. I mean, really, it's fine. We're, it's no problem providing it. It's just that all we want to do now is build the driveway, build the pond for the, in the rear that, that will be sodded and, and show the floodplain stuff that Ben asked for.
Okay, and this building that has the star on it, on this drawing?
Okay, right.
You're not building it either?
We're not building it. No, we would grade the pad, but we're not building anything there.
Whoa, 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 back up. You're grading the pad. You're doing work on this piece of property then?
Well, yeah, just like the driveway and the culverts there.
Well, no, it's not just like the driveway and the culverts. You're doing improvement on the site itself.
Okay. We're fine to wait on that pad. I just, while we were out there moving dirt, we thought it'd be good to just get as much of it done as we could now. I mean, we have no problem taking that off of.
That little square that's on there, then on the other drawing is outlined in red, or in the, in the packet is a little, what is that little square? Just to the, you know which little square I'm talking about?
I'm not sure. No, I'm sorry. I don't understand what you're asking.
Well, on one of the drawings that you submitted, it, it's outlined in red.
Is it, is it on this drawing that you're?
Yeah, it's on that little drawing. See the little box that has, having your line around it just to the left of the box with the star on it? What is that?
It's an existing building.
And are you doing something to it, too?
No, no, there's nothing planned. The only improvements are this driveway, some culverts, and then some grading for the pond in the very back and some grading for that building pad.
Okay, so Ben, do you need the elevations for that building pad? If they're going to be doing that as part of this, too?
No, because we're not approving that building. Whenever they come back with a large scale, we would look at the finished floor at that time. If they get the pad right, great. If they get it wrong, they'll have to adjust it.
Okay, so do they have to have a separate grading permit to be able to put that dirt over there?
Well, there'll be a grading permit that would be issued for that driveway, so it would be on the property.
Well, technically, I guess so, because the driveway split on the two pieces of property.
Right, so both those properties will be involved in that grading permit.
Okay. When do you think you're coming back with the large scale?
He, he's, he just wants to get this all prepared at this point so that the lot, the lot line adjustment can happen.
Well, the simplest thing is to do the lot line adjustment and just leave the, the rest of it alone. We can handle that with what we just talked about.
Well, okay, we wanted a driveway that could handle both those lots and that.
I understand that. It's the building, the pad, it's the... Okay, you guys have to decide what you want to do with this one.
You have any comments from the audience? To the commission?
Is there any way we can just vote on doing the driveway without anything else? And then making sure that it meets all staff's requirements? I don't, it's hard to know. Like, I don't see enough to approve a large-scale development, for sure.
Well, can we?
I don't know what to ask for.
Just a motion to approve the lot split, allowing the driveway to be built on both lots, meeting the standards and addressing the comments from engineering? Okay, so that would be the motion. That's all we're going to let happen? The rest of it has to come back before we do anything else?
Correct.
Okay, does that work? Okay. And Debbie will put all that in the minutes, so we'll know exactly what we said, right? That's why we do minutes, right?
No, not yet. I'll have to get my notes recorded.
Okay.
We're just doing the lot split.
So we're doing a motion to approve the lot split, subject to the engineering comments that Ben read for the lot split itself, which means the drainage report, the detention pond has to be sodded, the driveway has to be approved. That's what, that's all we're approving. Okay?
I hear a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mr. Covert.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mueller.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardell.
Yes.
Passes eight zero, lot split. We're not going to do a variance.
No, because we're not dealing with the large scale at all.
Okay. We'll move on to B 22102, Carrillo Holdings, end of South Miller Road, variance for minimum lot width, 70 to 17 and 70 to 18, presented by Nikki Littler.
They just look like Nikki. Do you have authorization or is, was it given to the firm?
I have authorization to, to represent the project. Our, the, the client and myself met with you in the office, and we've got a signed document.
It had Nikki's name on it before. Did we change it?
If we haven't, we will. I'm not completely aware of the, of the authorization form.
Debbie's going to look.
I'm sorry, ma'am. I didn't hear you.
Debbie's going to check just a minute.
Yes, ma'am.
See if we have authorization to represent this.
We did discuss the authorization whenever we were in the meeting in your office, ma'am?
We did discuss it, but I don't remember seeing the signed copy. Is you quiet here?
I don't even have an authorization in here. We showed that we've, oh, I bet it's in the lot split.
Okay, we're going to let this go. Go ahead.
Thank you. My client is requesting informal plat for property line adjustment, which is requiring this variance for lot frontage. The subject property lies at the end of South Miller Road, where the road stubs out. It's subdivision road, and it stubs out onto this property. And the current property line is farther west, 200 feet or so, 256 feet west of that access stubbed-out road. And we're wanting to just move that property line over to the stub-out road. That way, properties west and east can both access from it, which would require the variance from 70 feet down to 17.7 on one, one side of the, of the drive, and 18.18 on the other side.
What's the purpose of adjusting the line?
He feels that adjusting the line is going to make the property more marketable.
Do we know a septic system can fit on each of those lots? Has it been perk tested?
No, ma'am. With the adjacency to, to septic along the, or, excuse me, I said septic. I meant sewer. Along the south line of the property, plans are to connect to municipal sewer.
And that makes a 25-foot access. Correct?
Yes, ma'am. And change.
This is another one of those really unique situations. It doesn't have frontage on a public, it technically has frontage along 612, but you can't access it. But it still has frontage. Tyler, you got any words of wisdom? Do you see any problems with allowing it to be reduced to 70 feet? Or just allow them to have a shared access of 25 feet on two lots with, considering the frontage is along 612 instead of off of that street?
I don't, I don't, just looking at it on, on first glance, what are some of the concerns that, that you might have that could stand out here?
Well, it's, it's, it's not going to have, it doesn't meet the requirements for an SF2, because 17 feet doesn't even give close of 70 feet. But if you look at the portion that fronts onto 612, it's 122 feet on one lot. Can you go back to that other drawing? It shows 122, and then the other one has it the full length. So technically, it has frontage. Do we even need to give a variance on this side? And can we just require a joint access easement for 25 feet off of this side coming off that street? And we're really not granting a variance for the lot frontage?
Yeah, I don't know. What, what would you prefer? I think you could, I think either way would work.
I mean, the other option is to extend that driveway all the way up to the, to where you get 70 feet and it, and dedicated as a public street or an approved private street, then you got 70 feet on both sides.
What way would, would work best for the, the city here?
I don't, I don't think it makes any difference personally, but if setting the precedent of granting a variance to a lot frontage down to 17 and 18 feet, to me, is, is not an acceptable thing to do.
No, and I, I see what you're saying here. I think it would just be something if, if left up to the, to the members here for, possibly for them to decide.
It's unique, right? Well, the, the entire track was created by the highway. What would be, Nathan, would it be possible to extend an easement or a approved private street from the south property line north to 70 feet? And then they would have 70 foot on a, on a approved private street? And ask for waiver and improvements to the street?
I understand what you're saying, ma'am, and I do believe that that's possible. However, practically, on this project specifically, I don't believe it, it makes sense. And for this reason, is because the western tract, where it necks down so much, is not going to leave much buildable area. Plus, upon conversation with Springdale Water, they plan on putting a very large water main through there, parallel with that sewer main on the north side of it, which is going to have a 50-foot utility easement as well. And the utility lines would be offset about 10 feet. And so you see that long east-west sewer line, there's going to be a water main north of it with its own 50-foot utility easement, decreasing that buildable area by drastically. And so in conversation with Springdale Water, they said that they would more than likely purchase that western tract from my client because of its non-buildable nature. And so, all that being said, we're moving the property line, excuse me, we're, we're adjusting the property line over to, to try to make this the most marketable on that eastern tract, which is undeveloped and covered with trees at the moment.
So if you're taking another 50 feet all the way over to this new property line on, on the south side, the location of this line may not still have enough buildable. Why are we wait, doing this now? Why aren't we waiting till we know what Springdale Water's going to do? Why does it need to be done now?
Springdale Water said they're about a year out on the alignment for that, for that water main and wasn't willing to give any preliminary alignment or anything like that. And my client is holding the property at the moment and, and would like to, to sell it. I wouldn't note that the alignment that was conveyed to us through conversation, going parallel with the sewer line on that south line there, as it moves east to the other slide, if you will, where that sewer line stops, just on the right side or the east side of that stubbed-out driveway, the water main is going to come parallel to that, and then once it gets past that terminus, it's going to neck down, or excuse me, angle down to the south and then basically be within the same path of that sewer main as it travels farther east. So after the sewer main, it's going to angle down.
Well, there's a lot of issues on this. If you don't grant the variance, nothing can be done until we do some more work on it. If you grant the variance, then he can do this. So that's, the issue is whether you want to reduce the minimum lot size from 70 to 17.7 and 70 to 18.18. Once you take action on that, we'll figure out where we go from there.
We have any comments from the audience?
One other comment before. Uh, one other comment before we move on. The hammerhead issue that was discussed last time that we tabled it. All of those hammerheads are to be done on the property to the south, not on this piece of property. So that hammerheads are not, does not affect this piece of property.
Please state your name and address at the mic.
Cary Washburn, forty-five hundred Gibson Street. So if the line is moved, um, would it be moved towards, more towards the subdivision part? If he's wanting to relocate that line?
You see on the drawing on the screen where the box is under, where it says South Miller Road. That's where the property line, that blue line up through there is where the property line would go to. Right now it's further to the west now. And it's being moved over to center in that, where Miller Road ends up there. That's what they're trying to do. It really doesn't affect anything in the property in the subdivision because this is all outside the subdivision anyway.
Right.
It already gets access from that now. It's just that property to, where the property line now is, they don't have any access to it. How the highway department left it. Basically a landlot piece of property, I don't know, because it doesn't have access if the property is, is ever split. I can't answer that for you. I don't know how this happened really. Unless there was already a property line there when the highway department went through. I don't know. I don't know.
So is there a water line that they'll be able to tap into to get that?
There's water and sewer on that piece of property already. You see the sewer line at the very bottom, and I think it has water. Can you go to the other slide? The water line, where does the water line come into this property? I don't see it on here, but that doesn't mean anything. It, it's right to the.
Just southwest of the stub out road?
Yeah.
There's a fence line and a water main.
Right. The water line, water is already to the property and the sewer is already to the property too, so.
So is it's gonna stay a private property, correct? Out of the subdivision?
It's not part of the subdivision now.
Right.
It's not going to become part of the subdivision, even if this variance is granted and they're allowed to change to relocate the property line.
Right, okay. Just wanted to make sure of that. Okay.
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 Um, Missy Quarter, four-four-three-six Douglas Lane. Um, I'm the house directly behind this. So, along with a couple of others. So I guess my question is, is since this will be a private residence and it won't be. Within the subdivision, will it have covenants or can they come in and build a really small home? Can they build a duplex? What is the outcome of that?
They can build a single-family home. They can't build duplexes. And the only minimum we have is it has to be twenty-four foot wide and that's it.
Okay.
No standards, no covenants, or anything that goes with it.
So anything could go in there?
A single-family home.
Right.
Any style, any kind of single-family home, single-family home only.
Foundation, trailer house, would it be?
Manufactured home is not allowed. It has to be a single-family home built on a foundation at that location. No minimum standards other than the twenty-four feet, no minimum standards for siding or anything like that.
Okay.
And then it'll have to have two paved parking spaces.
Okay.
In front of the garage or next to the house. That's it. But whether we grant this variance, they can still build a single-family home there already, because it's already zoned SF two.
Thank you, thanks.
Is there any benefit just moving the property line to where you want to move it without us having to approve a variance?
Property line adjustments because there's no way to track them. That's why we go through all this process. So if somebody goes to the courthouse and looks at a piece of property, they can tell what happened to it. Been burned on that a couple of times where there was a lot line adjustment made and nobody knew it. Okay, so the question before you deny it is whether or not we're granting the variance to allow the frontage on a public street to be down from. Seventy feet on one lot to seventeen point seven and the other one to eighteen point eighteen. That's the only question you have denied. If that's allowed, then this can be filed with that new law. If you turn down the, uh, variance request tonight, we're back to square one, trying to figure out what to do with it. So this, this is a call for the vote.
Yeah, any other comments from the commission?
I think it's a reasonable, I think it's a reasonable request. If I had two parcels like that, that the highway came through and split them, and I, I think I'd wanna do the same thing. I don't think that sets a precedent.
Call for the vote? Call for vote, Mr. Cover.
Compton?
Yes.
Cover?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardale?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Passes eight zero. Uh, next we have a public hearing, rezonings. R twenty-two seventy-eight Central Baptist Church of Fayetteville, presented by Darryl Kendrick.
You have to go up to the podium and, sorry. We do appreciate you sitting down in front though. It's usually the last place where people sit. Can you give us your name and what you're, what you're trying to do?
Darryl Kendrick. Um, we are wanting to go from A one to, uh, P one zoning. So that eventually we can build a worship center there.
So that, I'm sorry? You, you need to pull the mic up because you're, you're hard to hear.
Okay. We're wanting to rezone from, uh, A one to P one so that we might eventually build, build a worship center.
Staff comments?
The comprehensive land use plan indicates reasonable commercial use. The rezoning request is keeping with the following. Goals and policies and is recommended for approval uses that commonly have moderate to large-scale assemblies of people such as churches. Funeral homes, membership organizations, and other institutions should be appropriately located on adequate-sized parcels with sufficient space to accommodate the off-street parking. And accessory needs such usage should be located so as to minimize any adverse or undue significant burden on adjacent or adjoining land uses. As well as that portion of the street system.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, call for vote? Call for, Mr., Mr. Parker?
Mueller?
Yes. Oh, sorry.
Excuse me.
Oh.
Please state your name and address.
Um, my name is Ferry Dinger. I'm a local business owner here. Um, I have bought the adjacent, uh, purchased the adjacent property that's currently marked A one, uh, twelve sixty-nine Jaro. Um, that is just south, um, on Old Missouri. And I just wanted to get clarification on. Um, because I also have plans later in the future, uh, to, uh, have my property, uh, put a request in to rezone as well. Uh, to commercial at some point. And I just didn't know, like, I just wanted to understand what the impact would be if, if this happens.
Well, the rezoning of the property to P one allows for institutional facilities and, and, you know, we'll, we'll have, they'll have to go through a large-scale development plan to show how they're gonna build it on that. On that site to provide adequate parking and access in and out. It doesn't, it doesn't rezone your property at all? It still stays A one? You would have to come in and request to have it rezoned?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. I just didn't know.
Okay.
Any other comments from the audience? Back to the vote.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardale?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Cover?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council next Tuesday evening on the thirteenth, because we're not sure where there will be a second council meeting in December.
Next is R twenty-two seventy-nine Tyson Foods, presented by Heather Chilson.
Hi, I'm Heather Chilson with Tyson Foods. We are requesting a rezone from I one to C two.
Staff comments?
The comprehensive land use plan indicates light industrial warehouse use. Their proposed uses of this piece of property is not allowed in. In industrial zones, why they're coming in to have it rezoned to a C two. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Through the city's economic base and tax structure through promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations, ensure adequate land allocation for commercial areas. Sufficient size and in proper locations. And Heather, are you at a position that you can indicate what the building's gonna be used for?
Um, yes, we're looking at, uh, using it for a daycare.
Okay. And a daycare facility is not allowed in I one zone, so that's why they're rezoning.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, is a call for the vote? Call for the vote. Call for vote, Mr. Cover.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardale?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Cover?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council next Tuesday evening.
Next is R twenty-two eighty, Mary Epp Shop, presented by Steve King.
Steve King, we're trying to rezone from an A one.
Can you pull that mic down?
We're trying to rezone from an A one to a SF two, to build a small, single-family home.
Staff comments?
The comprehensive land use plan indicates low-density residential use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping. With the following goals and policies recommended for approval, sure adequate land allocation for residential purposes. Encourage the development of a variety of housing types appropriate to the size and income of all households living, working in Springdale.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for, Ms. Mueller?
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardale?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Cover?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Thank you.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the thirteenth.
Next we have R twenty-two eighty-one, Burl Incorporated, presented by Joel Brown and Stephen Boyd.
Uh, Stephen's not here, but I'm Joel Brown and I'm, uh, representing Burl. I'm with Good Shepherd and Home Care and, uh, Transportation. We're the, we're purchasing this, uh, property from Burl. It's currently zoned to P one. We're asking to rezone to O one because we're not a nonprofit or a church. And, uh, we just wanna operate our home care business out of that, um, facility and our, our non-emergency medical transport.
Staff comments?
The comprehensive land use plan shows low-density residential use. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies. Comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval, encourages development of office and professional uses. That provide a transition between residential areas and more intense uses, reasonably, reasonable building height, imitations, adequate buffering and landscaping to secure compatibility. And this is kind of a unique situation in that. What they're, what they wanna do is really a commercial use, but we don't want a pocket of commercial in there. They can operate an office in this facility. It's a little bit larger than what we would normally allow, so. The office facility itself will be a non-conforming use, the size of the building, so it can be altered. And the additional storage that's already on there is a non-conforming use. And as long as they don't ex- expand it, it could operate in and O one zone.
Any comments from the audience? It's to the commission, call for the vote? Mr. Parker?
Austin?
Yes.
Cardale?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Cover?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes. Passes eight zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the thirteenth.
Thank you.
Next is R twenty-two eighty-two Northwest Granite, presented by Northwest Granite.
Um, we're wanting to rezone from C two to I one.
Can you give us your name?
Selina from Northwest Granite.
Okay. Is she authorized to, to represent? Are you an owner of Northwest Granite?
We are, he is.
Okay. Okay. You wanna rezone from C two to I one?
Yes.
Okay. The comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use. The rezoning request is not in keeping with the comprehensive land use plan is not recommended for approval. What do you intend to use this property for? That would be industrial in nature?
We are trying to, uh, um, rent it and the person that is interested to rent it, he's, uh, he owns a dump trucks. So he wants to park his dump trucks in there.
Operating a trucking establishment there, is that what he wants to do? Because that's allowed in the C two zone. Why did you think it need to go to industrial?
Because whenever he came to get a permit to, from the city, they told him they, that, that place has to be industrial for, be able for him to rent it as a.
What else is he gonna do there besides park dump trucks?
Just park it. Like.
Now maintenance, is he gonna use the structure? You can take the structure down?
I mean, he probably used the shop just to do mechan, uh, basic mechanic whenever he needs. Assuming, yeah.
Okay, I don't know why a trucking establishment like that wouldn't work in an, in a C two zone. Is he gonna store stuff outside, inside? What does he intend to do?
Uh, ins, outside, he is gonna park his trucks and then inside, he is gonna, like I say, we, use it whenever he needs to use, uh, uh, do some type of mechanic.
Mechanic work.
Mechanic work, if he needed.
Okay, is he going to store any materials on site from?
No.
His dump trucks will come back empty?
Yeah, it will come back empty.
Okay, I would suggest that we table this a month and let you come in and sit down and let's, let's talk about that before we go and rezone it to an industrial zone. Because it, if it's just a trucking operation like that, it can operate in, in a C two zone.
Okay.
But if he's storing stuff outside or if he's manufacturing something, then it needs to be industrial. Okay, do you have a problem with, go ahead.
Well, we're not rezoning for that specific use.
That's true.
Okay.
If we resented to an industrial zone, we've opened it up for all kinds of use and it's a pretty small site for industrial use. That's, that's one of my other concerns.
Your concern is the small site?
Uh huh.
I mean, I just looked at everything, like, you know, look at that map right there.
Yeah.
You got I one to the west, I one to the east.
Some of those aren't really I one uses, those really aren't Y one uses in that area. If y'all want to vote on it, that's fine. I, I just have some concerns.
I just, I, I just saying if, if they went, if he has a tenant that went out, they tried to get a license, the city sent them back here to have it rezoned. And he's here to do that. I kinda feel like I don't, you know, feel like, let's do what he's asking if, if we're okay, or let's vote on it. Instead of like jangling it, having him go back and then, you know, same thing.
If it gets turned down, he has to appeal it. If it's turned down, the council has to wait for. He has to wait for a year.
That can be up to him.
Yeah.
Do you want us to vote on it tonight? Or would you like us to?
Yes.
So just before we go forward, right here. Uh, it's currently C two. There's a chance that as it is, you could rent this to the business you're trying to rent it to. You're asking us to rezone it, which we may vote not to do that, which could delay all of this. So that you're sure that's what you wanna do, that you don't wanna double-check to make sure that you couldn't do it as it's currently zoned.
Okay, well, I don't, I mean, I don't have an, I don't have any problem by renting it like that. I mean. I just, I guess I need to ask him first, who talked to him, who told him that he needs to be re- rezoned, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's unfortunate that if, if what Pat's saying, that we, basically what you've told us, it, you could do it for what it's zoned currently. And I'd hate for us to, to vote for this if you don't have to rezone, you can go ahead and, and rent it the way you're wanting to.
Were you told that you'd have to pave the parking, you can't park in gravel, you'd have to do that, you'd have to pave the parking, those kind of things?
Yeah.
Okay, and you were gonna do all those without any variances or anything?
No, we just gonna, we're gonna do that after, but right now we're just trying to. See, whenever he came to ask for the permit, that's, I don't know who he talked in here in the, in the city, that they told him that has to be industrial. I guess it was just a misunderstanding between.
I'm not sure when he told us all he was gonna do either.
Yeah, I guess he was probably misunderstanding between the, the guy that he's interested in renting and then, uh, the person. It was probably not good communication, but. I mean, I'm fine to live in it the way it is right now, I mean, if.
So do you want us to vote on it? Do you wanna table it and, and let's meet and talk about what, what we need to do? If we table it, we have to come back in January.
No, we, I don't want, I don't want you guys to bother. We're just gonna wait and we're just gonna rent like that and we can just talk about it to go forward.
Okay, so you're asking us. Okay, so you're asking us to just table it, and you'll come see us, and bring the guy who's, wants to do something, so we know everything he's intending to do.
Yeah.
And let's sit down and talk about it, and then we'll figure out whether it needs to be rezoned or not.
That'll work.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
This is table.
Okay.
We'll move on to preliminary plats, replats, and final plats. First is RP-2218 by Ari Business Park presented by Alan J. Young.
Good evening, Alan Young with DCI. This is an existing subdivision of eight lots. It's the Ari Business Park. Lot eight is a, a narrow strip lot that is along the west side of, uh, Ari Business Park, lots one through six, and it extends to the west along the north side of Shaver Street. Uh, my client owns the adjoining parcel to the west of Lot eight. We are simply rezoning this subdivision to remove Lot eight and detach it so that it can be attached to his land that is going to be platted on the next item on your agenda.
Staff comments?
It's not being rezoned. We're asking to detach this from the subdivision.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct. Okay.
In addition to standard comments, uh, we will be needing a resolution, corporate resolutions displaying that those requesting and signing for this replat are legally allowed to do so. That would be PNC Steel Properties LLC, River Real Estate LLC, Anderson Revocable Trust, Mathias Shopping Centers. Uh, additionally, all property owners from the subdivision will, uh, need to provide written consent and approval for the replat to occur. Staff has discussed this with the developing engineer, and it is understood.
Basically, what happened, when the subdivision was put in, they didn't want the adjacent property to have access to the street, so left near a strip on that side. And now they're wanting to take that out and attach it to the property to the other side, and all the participants in that subdivision are willing to sign to allow it to be detached.
Yes, ma'am. They, they are in process of getting the, the rest of the owners of the subdivision signatures. There are only four owners, uh, Sam Mathias, Mathias Properties is the applicant, um, that is wanting this done. Uh, he has reached out to the other three. Uh, one of them is a trust, the Anderson Trust. Uh, the other two are corporate entities. Um, all three of them are a husband and wife, uh, team that is ownership of the entity, and then all three of them, the husband has passed away, and they are working through the paperwork to get the signa, the proper signatures and the authorization for those signatures so it can move forward. Um, at this moment, I would ask that the consideration be that it could be passed with the condition that those signatures be acquired. Um, I'd ask that you consider that.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission?
This is a motion subject to staff comments.
Sole motion.
Motion, Mr. Cloud. Seconded by Mr. Covert.
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
If you want this to go to council next Tuesday evening, the ordinance needs to be in our office by tomorrow at noon. Because this has to go to council as a replat, so we need an ordinance in our office by tomorrow at noon to go on council agenda for next Tuesday evening.
I understand. Um, would all signatures be required by that time, or could it still may go for it as a condition?
It, it goes forth with the, if council approves it, it won't get signed. I'm the last one to sign, and I will not sign until everybody else has signed, and then you go get it filed.
Perfect. Yes, thank you, ma'am. That's what we would like.
Okay.
Next is PP-2215 Shaver Edition presented by Alan J. Young.
All right, again, so this one is the land that that land is being attached to. Um, my client would like to, uh, we, we came here a couple months ago and had it rezoned to commercial from A1, and, uh, he is presenting a 10-lot preliminary subdivision. We're going to extend, uh, city street, dedicate right-of-way, uh, extend water, and extend sewer, uh, put in storm drainage and detention, uh, with, uh, this preliminary plat development, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Staff comments?
With the approval of the previous replat, the only comments that staff has are standard comments.
Uh, engineering comments in addition to standard comments show the minimum finished floor elevation on the lots that are adjacent to the detention pond, and dedicate the right-of-way to, for McCray Street, and street improvements would be required along McCray unless waived.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, be a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Motion, Ms. Mueller?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cloud.
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Cardil?
Yes.
Passes eight zero. Next is PP-2216 Deer Creek Phase Two Revised presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Brandon Rush with ESI. Um, I think the commission has seen this before. Um, basically, this is a relatively minor addition to improve, um, the grading on the site, make some of the lots a little more buildable, um, same number of lots from before. Happy to answer any other questions.
Well, you took out a cul-de-sac and put in a hammerhead.
Yes, we did, we did that as well.
And you didn't lose any lots?
Correct.
Okay. And so, looking at lot, at the end of this first street, those are buildable lots with those that are on the west side of that hammerhead. Because you still have two lots. The, the hammerhead is actually on the, the second lots from the end, and where, where will the driveways? And there are buildable lots, those two that are left.
Uh, yeah, they, they can still build on that.
Okay. Can we look at, the other one there is, is the very end, the same situation on that, on that north end. Where will the driveways? Will there be a shared driveway between the two lots on both sides of that hammerhead? Is that where you anticipate the driveways are going to be, and it'll be a shared driveway with a hammerhead?
Um, I anticipate them being separate driveways, uh, off of the hammerhead, yes.
Okay. Just looks a little strange.
It does.
We got staff comments besides my asking dumb questions part.
Uh, staff has only standard comments at this time.
So, in addition to standard comments, uh, we need to have a signed and sealed copy of the drainage report submitted. We have one, but it's not sealed. And then, we were concerned about the fencing on the other hammerhead, so if you go back to the other page, not the ones that have lots on the backside, but the one just north of that, right above the E in Phase Two, there's a note there that says the fences will be built with the houses, but the houses don't own the property, so I'm not sure how that would happen. I think that fence needs to be built with the subdivision, or someone needs to explain how that's going to be tied to that house construction, because it's not on the same piece of property.
Is there a standard for the fence? What kind of fence is it supposed to be?
That, that's the follow-up question. What's the fence look like? It just says fence, so we don't, we don't know.
I think we're okay with building that with the subdivision instead of with the house construction.
Ready to go on? Any comments from the audience? To the commission, be a motion subject to staff comments.
Are you building any other fencing for the subdivision that you're aware of or your client? Not that you know of.
I think it's just typical stuff.
I hear a motion.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Motion, Ms. Mueller? Seconded by Mr. Covert.
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardil?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Passes eight zero. Next, we have PP-2217 Monitor Meadows presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Brandon Rush, ESI. Um, this is a subdivision in Benton County off of, uh, Mayo and Monitor Road. Um, happy to answer any questions on this, too.
Staff comments?
Before we get to staff comments, let me ask a couple questions. The little squares on here, or the little rectangles, are the septic systems? Not the houses?
Correct. Those are, uh, proposed primary and secondary septic leach fields.
Adjacent to the detention ponds.
Some lots, they are close to proposed detention ponds. We noticed this as well, and we're working with the septic designer to possibly identify septic fields that are on these lots that are further away from the detention ponds, but we didn't have that in time.
I just think it creates a concern if you've got a septic system right clo, that close to the detention pond. How, how do you keep it from draining directly into the septic, I mean, to the detention Did, uh, let me back up and ask, did the health department know the locations of the detention ponds when they did the perk test? Do we know?
Um, the septic designer did, yes.
Okay, the septic designer did, but has the health department approved those?
Not yet. It's not been submitted yet.
So, we don't know if those septic systems will work on any of these lots, but they haven't been approved by the health department, correct?
Well, they're designed to meet the requirements. We just haven't submitted it because we're trying to submit ones that are ultimately further away from those ponds.
Okay, I'm finished. You go ahead and do the rest of the comments.
Uh, in addition to standard comments, the site plan states that there are at least two detention lots to be maintained by the POA. Applicant has responded stating that these documents will be provided after, uh, final plat, and, uh, you all have already covered the septic field question.
So, in addition to standard comments, um, the street section in one place is shown as 14 feet, I think on the detail, but on the plat, it's shown as 20 feet, so we need to rectify that. I think 20 feet is what should be required. The adjacent, uh, county roads are recommended to be widened to 24-foot paved width as needed for the frontages, and, uh, we would recommend streetlights along the, the road, although these are not going to be city streets, right?
Any comments from the audience? Please state your name and address.
David Boucher, um, 3205 Luper Road. We own the property that is in the upper left-hand corner, um, on which we raise horses. Um, I guess he'd answer a question about the detention ponds, um, staying there. That does provide drainage for our property, and my, my ask is, the, that runs to the east from there? Is that intended to be kept as it is right now for drainage? Um, this is going to be enlarged into being a pond, and then it's going to come through a pipe and come out. Okay, of that. Okay. Um, the other question we have is, um, has, have any, uh, consideration been given for Mayo Road, because that is a major thoroughfare for gravel trucks? Um, that road does not, is not being kept up very well. Um, how is this going to impact that in the infrastructure of the area?
Um, I, I think that with such large lots, um, this will add relatively little traffic, um, compared to the, the gravel trucks in and out.
And my final question is, since we are raising, we are using that for agricultural purposes, will there be fences included with this development? All right, so, thank you.
Any other comments from the audience?
Rick Parsons, we own the, uh, property south of, uh, this subdivision proposed, and the property that is part of the L there that is actually, uh, in the nor, in the southwest corner right there, yes, thank you, whoever did that. Um, and my, my question is about the streets. We could look at the plat again. This street that comes off of, uh, that goes east-west there, uh, normally you see, uh, we're accustomed in other, other developments in our area, has, uh, a cul-de-sac where there's room to turn. Will this street just terminate there at each one of the, well, I guess that's just one lot there to the north. Uh, will that street just be, uh, terminate there, and how will people who go down that street turn around? Will they be asked to, will they have to turn around in a driveway, in someone's personal driveway? I can see a traffic problem, uh, with that. And then the other thing is the, uh, the access, will there be access from both, as I see it, and I, I'm not good at reading these drawings, but, uh, will there be access from Mayo Road on the north, and then access from, uh, Monitor Road on the south, uh, so that there will be, uh, someone would be able to cut through there? Um, and I'm concerned about the traffic. There's a lot of, uh, traffic, especially in, uh, in the early mornings and in after-work times of, uh, commuters, uh, cutting through there, it's a sort of a, a way to cut through from those people that are coming from 412 through Sonora, uh, and then over to 264. There's a lot of traffic in there. If they get behind a dump truck, or they think they can find a shortcut, there would be, uh, there would be some people that would say, well, we can just go on down here a little further and, uh, turn north and cut through that way. Uh, any consideration for that? And then one more thing, on the south entrance, if that is an entrance there, and I assume it is, um, then there is, uh, a pretty significant grade right there change. Uh, I'm going to say it's, uh, maybe 15 feet. Um, you, you can't, if you're standing in the road, you cannot see very far into there, so there's going to have to be a significant cut there to bring that down to grade, and as they bring that down to grade, uh, are they, are they going to clear enough on each side so that people turning in and out of there can see traffic coming from each direction? Uh, this may not be the place to be asking those questions, but those are a few that I have.
Thank you.
Um, to, to your first question, there's a kind of a T-type ending on that, end of that proposed Street B. Um, so basically, trucks can, or cars can come down and then back, and then go back the way they came. Um, it's just kind of a different style than the cul-de-sac, but serves the same purpose. Um, to the second question, cut through traffic. And I can't say that no one's ever going to try and cut through there for sure, but...
What about the site distance on the Monitor Road?
The site distance, there is a significant cut down there, and grading is going to be spread out significantly to provide adequate site distance. You can see. You can kind of see the contours on this. It's a pretty big scale map, but even there, you can see the cut that's going to take place. Yeah, so the street will be twenty feet, and I can't... I mean, it looks like it could be twenty feet either side of cut down at three to one, so sixty feet total across easily. Well, I think the first thing to prevent that would be some signs that say, you know, dead-end road or whatever. But ignoring that, if you get down to the end, you can back up into the little north-south stub there. It's on Lot seventeen. That feature is designed for fire trucks to turn around.
Any other comments from the audience? To the commission, your motion's subject to staff comments.
So motion.
Mr. Cloud. Second, Mr. Culver.
Culver.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardell.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Thank you.
Next is RP twenty-two nineteen Sam's Club Edition presented by ESI.
So this is similar to a replat that came through recently. Just wanted to change up the acreages a little bit of what someone's wanting to buy, so that's a reason for the resubmit.
Staff comments?
In addition to staff, or I'm sorry, standard comments, we do have a statement from the city attorney's office that reads, "On Friday, twelve-two-twenty-two, a letter was received from Dr. Rouse of Rouse Holdings LLC pertaining to the Sam's Club Edition replat, RP twenty-two nineteen, which is on the planning commission agenda for this evening. The letter from Dr. Rouse requested that he be granted an access easement from the owner of the property to be replatted so that Dr. Rouse would have an additional access to a public street to the south of the property he currently owns at fifty-three oh one West Sunset. The property already has access to West Sunset. After reviewing his request and reviewing the proposed replat, it is my opinion that the public street, or Sam's Club place, does not extend to nor is it adjacent to Dr. Rouse's property. In addition, there is no requirement of the dedication of any public street associated with the proposed replat, and the proposed replat meets the city's standards in all respects. It is therefore, in my opinion, that the city does not have the legal authority to either require the easement requested by Dr. Rouse or to make the granting of such an easement a condition of approval of the proposed replat. Put more simply, in order for the requested easement to be granted, it would have to be done so by agreement between Dr. Rouse and the owner of the property proposed to be replatted."
Any comments from the audience?
Yes, I'm Bob Downham. I'm Representative Dr. Rouse, and his son Philip Rouse is here with us tonight. I understand totally what the planning commission, the planning office stated. I guess, you know, we're in a dilemma because when Dr. Rouse purchased that two acres and when the insurance company purchased their property, we didn't have near the situation what we've got on traffic right now. And so Shelter also has a tremendous problem getting out of that same exit and meaning going west out of that. And I understand the city doesn't have authority because they've left a gap between where the street's going to be, excuse me, and where Dr. Rouse's property sits. And I guess only what I'm asking you is if you could just request, and I know this is difficult, for Sam's to actually look at that situation and for, on behalf of the citizens of, anybody that's wanting to go out from Shelter Insurance or for whatever purchaser of this two acres that Dr. Rouse has for sale, would it at least talk with us about granting us access to that? We've tried a lot to contact Sam's Real Estate in that field to get any response whatsoever. And they're a huge company, and I understand all that, but we have a pretty bad dilemma here for this property. And the more and more proper traffic gets on that, and it's not going to slow down, it's going to get worse, it's going to be bad for Shelter as well. So I'm just asking if you guys would at least...
Do you know by chance who you spoke to at Sam's or who you reached out to at Sam's Club?
We've tried to.
Yes, sir, I know. Do you know who you tried to get ahold of? Do you remember anybody you spoke with?
I don't have the name in front of me.
Okay. If you give me your number, I'll catch up with you after the meeting. I work for the company. I'd be happy to connect you to the right folks.
Okay, great. I sure will. Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? To the commission, it'd be a call for the vote. I'm sorry, a motion, subject to staff comments.
So moved, Dale.
Motion of Dr. Culver, or Dr. Compton?
I like the sound of it, though.
Second, Howard, Mr. Austin.
Mueller.
Subject to staff comments. Approval subject to staff comments. The comments that he read would be in that staff comments. That we're not, that we don't have any authority to ask them to make that connection.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardell.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Culver.
Recused.
Passes seven zero, one refused.
If you want this to go to council next Tuesday, the ordinance needs to be in our office by noon tomorrow.
Next, we have FP twenty-two oh seven, Haberton Ridge, Phase Two and Three, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Brandon Rush, ESI. This is the final plat of Haberton Ridge, Phase Two and Three. It's a hundred and nine residential lots. Happy to answer any questions on this.
Staff comments?
In addition to planning standard comments, we do have comments from Springdale Water Utilities to be read. "Please be advised that the Springdale Water and Sewer Commission approved allowing the final plat of the subdivision to move forward prior to the final completion of water and sewer facilities, subject to the following conditions. These were updated last as of close of business yesterday. The developer-owner is to provide a one-hundred-and-fifty-percent guarantee bond for improvements to sanitary sewer pump station. The cost of the bond shall be reviewed and approved by the staff of the Springdale Water Utilities prior to issue. The engineer of the project shall supply a detailed breakdown of construction items remaining and associated costs. The owner-developers shall supply a copy of the contract for construction for sanitary sewer pump station. The final plat shall include language indicating that the sanitary sewer pump station is incomplete at the time of final plat and that no dwellings shall receive a certificate of occupancy until all items of construction related to water and sewer improvements are one-hundred percent complete at the sole discretion and determination of the Springdale Water Utilities. All standard, I'm sorry, conditions for all approval and acceptance of the water and sewer improvements shall remain as required in the Springdale Water Utilities specification requirements for the construction of water and sewer facilities, latest edition with modifications."
Engineering comments in addition to standard comments are complete the punch list items, construct the walking trail, and submit the final plat checklist items.
And Ed, do you have some comments? From a billing inspection standpoint?
For the record, because the Water Department will not issue meters until the sewer facilities are in place, so we won't issue any plumbing permits because City Ordinance says we can, they cannot. At first plumbing inspection, they have to have water on-site, and that's per City Ordinance. So they need to make the purchaser or the client aware.
So what that means, they can get foundation permits?
They can sell the lots and they can put foundations on them. That's all they can do.
Until the Water Department is at the point they can issue water meters?
Right.
Okay. It's not just you can't get a C of O. You can't even start...
Yeah, pushes the timeline way forward, yes.
Right. Okay, everybody's aware of that, Brandon? The buyer is aware of that, too?
Yes, ma'am, they are.
Okay. And construct the walking trails? Are you going to bond for those?
I know those are in progress and partially completed, so...
In progress, meaning they're staked out there and that's about it?
Yes.
Well, that, to me, is not exactly in process, but, you know, we had an issue with this subdivision when it started in that lots were sold and people were not told there would be a trail between the lots, and then we had to readjust the trail locations. So that's not going to happen this time because those trails are going to be installed before, or you're going to bond for them before we sign the plat?
Yes.
I don't think we should bond.
Okay.
I don't think we should allow these to be bonded because they're on private property. So even if we held the money, we don't have the authority to go build them. So we normally bond for things that are in right-of-way that we can go fix if it doesn't happen. So I think they need to be constructed.
Okay, which means we don't sign the final plat until those are constructed.
Think that's okay. The intent is to have these built as soon as possible.
Okay, that's fine, as long as we all know that. Okay.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, the motion's subject to staff comments.
Patsy, do your comments you just made follow in line with subject to staff comments?
Yeah, we'll add those to the staff comments, yes. They'll all be staff comments.
Just want to verify.
Yep.
So motion.
Motion, Mr. Cloud.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mueller.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardell. Cloud. Compton.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Passes eight zero. Move on to the large-scale developments. First is L twenty-two oh six, Worth Lane Commercial Park Revised, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Brandon Rush with ESI. This is an easy one. This project was previously approved. There's no real changes, except they're wanting to add a phase line so that the northernmost building is in Phase One and the southern two buildings are in a Phase Two.
Can you move the, okay. Phase one is a southern, Phase two, and then Phase three is, there's nothing designed for that, right?
Phase three is, has been submitted and will come before you, God willing, next month.
Okay. The detention that's required for this, is it built as part of Phase One?
It will be built in Phase One, yes.
Okay. And the access all the way down through there will be built? Well...
It's an existing...
But when you get to Phase Three, that's when you've got to do the rest of it, basically, yeah, okay.
Any other staff comments?
As the only change is the inclusion of a phasing plan, staff has only standard comments.
Patsy took my idea.
Sorry.
Detention needs to be completed with Phase One, and the easement needs to be filed around the detention pond, so we'd have access with Phase One.
Which means they can't get a building permit for the building until that's done, or it can be occupied, which? Before they can occupy the building?
Right.
Okay.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, motion, subject to staff comments? Motion, Mr. Culver?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mueller.
Tyler.
Yes.
Excuse me, Austin.
Yes.
Cardell.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Oh, Parker.
There you go.
Yes.
Well, I didn't hear Shannon. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Still passes eight zero. We'll move on to L twenty-two sixty-five Townsend Smith Tile with variance V twenty-two one fourteen for entrances and materials and colors, presented by Half and the Stories and Associates.
My name is Isaiah Philly with Half Associates. I'm here representing Townsend and Smith Tile. And what we're doing is we're seeking large-scale approval for these developments, which are like a warehouse store mix. And then we're also seeking approval for a request for variances on primary entrances and building materials. And I can field any questions that you may have.
Staff comments?
Along with standard comments, planning has the comments for the variants we'll address for the second entrance on facing wagon wheel and then also the building materials. The north side, more than fifty percent is metal.
For engineering, in addition to standard comments, please revise the streetlight note. Should say installed by utility company and owners expense electricity billed to the city and dedicate the shared access easement or informal plat.
Any comments from the audience? This is to the commission.
So the commercial design standards, you don't want to do anything on the end of the buildings to the north because your justification is because they don't face wagon wheel?
That is correct. It's not visible from the public right-of-way on wagon wheel.
Okay, but the commercial design standards doesn't say that it has to be only those areas that are visible from a public access, number one. But on the north side, that cul-de-sac comes down to that property line, so technically you can see it from that cul-de-sac. So you're proposing to screen it on that side rather than doing something to the end of that building?
That's correct. We're proposing to have a six-foot privacy fence around the perimeter as well as landscaping to help screen. I think we're proposing white pines up there as well as oak trees, and when those grow and develop, they'll offer screening on that north side.
So how many years does it take them to get to a size that provides that screening? If you put in two-and-a-half-inch caliber trees?
That I don't know off the top of my head.
Can we go to the elevations? Okay, so that wainscoting they're putting down, the rest of the buildings can't be put on those north ends to break it up so it's not all metal?
We can do that to break it up.
Okay, what would be the percentage then? At least it's not a hundred percent.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a hundred percent. I don't know the percentage off the top of my head. I'd have to refer or get with the architect.
Okay, then the entrances, you're... Okay, then the entrances, you're, you're not providing principal entrances on wagon wheel because they, the entrances are based on the parking lot areas that you have to.
Correct.
But you still have a sidewalk access out to wagon wheel from each of the lots. It's just that's not where the entrance is.
Correct.
Okay. And then what colors are you trying to use? And we talked about the materials. Tell us what those materials are that you have on there.
Um, let's see. I guess I'm, I'm not as familiar with the materials as the architect, however. I think on the first submission we had, we included some, some colors to go along with the elevations. I can't think of them off the top of my head. They're not on these, provided on these sheets.
Any comments from the audience? This is to the commission.
What, what's the, what's the hardship again? Is it, it's 30,000 square foot worth of buildings that front onto like one of our busiest streets? What's the hardship for why we can't, why we can't just make it work?
For the, are you talking in reference to the building materials or the, or the doors or both?
I guess both.
Both. Well, for the, for the entrances, the way the site's laid out, it makes most sense to have the primary entrances facing the interior of the site for both buildings. In addition to that, I think it, it could be a potential security issue if you have a, you know, building facing wagon wheel road or a door facing wagon wheel road. The hardship for the building materials is, I guess, putting in, putting in a different material would break up the, I guess it would break up the synonymous pattern or that makes the building aesthetically pleasing. I guess is the hardship.
Okay. Can we take these separately?
Yeah, I would like to take all three separately.
Okay, you wanna do the variances first?
So there's just two variances, one for entrances and one for materials and colors? Yep. Okay. So we're taking, taking them together or not? No.
No, we're going, we'll, we'll start with the entrances.
Okay.
Interferences, that'd be a call for the vote for the entrances on A. Call for vote, Mr. Parker.
Austin?
No.
Cordell? Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes. That's passes five.
Two, three, six, six one.
One with one, six, six one and one accused. Okay, next is the materials and colors B. That'd be a call for the vote. Call for the vote. Call for vote, Mr. Covert?
Cordell?
Yes.
Cloud?
No.
Compton?
No.
Covert?
No.
Mueller?
No.
Parker?
No.
Tyler?
No.
Austin?
No.
Okay. That fails one to six, one to seven.
Okay, you have the right to appeal. The planning commission's denial of the variance has to be filed within 15 days. You know, notify the adjacent property owners and you have to indicate why you think the planning commission's decision was in error. Okay?
Okay.
Now we need a motion. And what that means is you've got to go back in the predominant material has to be something other than metal. And if you don't appeal, you can revise your plan. Staff will go through it till we get to the point where you have something that's 51% not metal.
Okay.
Okay? Now we need a motion.
Need a motion subject staff comments on the large scale. Motion, Mr. Parker? Second, Mr. Covert?
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker? Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cordell?
Passes eight zero. Next we have L 2266 Car Mart Presented by Blue and Associates and Butch Parmley.
George DeKane with Blue and Associates. Butch Parmley is available if you have any questions of him as well. Very simple project. There's an existing structure on the site. They're expanding it. This is so that they can basically clean their cars, get it ready for sale and presentation. They're gonna use this lot for that. It's employee only, no access to the public. Nobody else is gonna be coming into the site. We have worked with the city on the detention pond. Katie, we, we did talk to her about that and how we were releasing the water through there. We have the landscaping trees throughout the site. And, and we're showing a, an eight foot privacy fence going around with landscape pockets where the trees are inside the landscape pockets as well. If you have any questions, I am available.
Staff comments?
For planning, we have standard comments for a large scale development. And additionally, foundation landscaping is required. We'd like to see some on the north and west side or a variance submitted. That's all.
For engineering, in addition to standard comments, the sidewalk does not connect to the right of way. We understand that there may not be public coming there, but it's possible employees might wanna ride their bike or walk to work. So we still think that's necessary. And need wheel stops when parking stalls are adjacent to five foot sidewalk.
Bill's got some comments? Oh, okay.
Larry Sherry, we have the 1768 Butterfield Koch Road. Our land is immediately south. I'd spoke to Katie about the Roche Coleman subdivision that's going in. And the detention pond and the car mart has given them permission to allow that water to come over on them. They have pretty much a, a water problem right now. I guess my question is, I don't want any more water or water problems on our property. And I wanted to address that issue.
So in conversations with Katie, the, it, it was almost impossible to get the water from the, the, what development was that? The subdivision to our west into our pond. It just wasn't functioning correctly. So what we have done was we have taken all the water from our site and the offsite water to the north of us. And that'll be going into our pond. And instead of releasing through, sorry, your name? Larry. Yeah, instead of releasing through Mr. Larry's site, we are actually taking all the water from our site and some area to the north of it and actually putting it into the pond and then releasing it into the street. So you should see a reduction in water coming through your site.
So the water will not, the water will not come from the Roche Coleman project? It still will?
Yeah.
And then it'll come over onto the car mart?
So we're gonna take a, we're gonna take it around, in a ditch around our pond and release it where it was originally going, which was your property. But that's just the Roche Coleman. We have effectively taken all the karma property out from going across your property. There really was no way to get your water into that system because it was actually higher than we could actually effectively get it to flow in that direction.
Well, Roche Coleman, that development back there, they brought the grade of the land up close to five feet in that northwest corner.
Sure.
And so when I talked to Katie, the, and I got out on the property and looked at it, it drains back to that north pro, area. And I said, where, where does the water go from there? And they said, well, car mart has given us permission to allow it to come over on them. You already have a, a pond when it rains right now. So is it gonna stay that way and are we gonna get additional water from there?
So based on the information that we have, I don't know if we have the grading plan available or not. No? Okay. So based on our information, the water, even if it, it was still releasing onto our property from the Roche Coleman site and was releasing, it, it basically cut through the middle of our property and down onto your site. We, we're not changing that part of it. You're just getting less water because we're taking care of water that was originally going onto your property. As far as we could tell, there was nothing ponding our, on our site. At least from the information available to us based on topographic information from the survey.
Well, there he is. And I got a question. How much, we're taking something that has very little impervious surface and we're paving the whole thing basically, right?
Sure. And we're sending all of that into our detention pond.
Okay, I'm just saying that if there was already kind of a water issue and we're gonna pave the whole thing, I just wanna make sure drainage just comes up a lot and it's what's kind of a sticking point of mine, especially with neighbors, when neighbors have said they're, they didn't have water. Now they're getting water on their property. And I feel like we need to like, we need to be 150% sure that there's absolutely no increase onto them. You know what I'm saying? Cause if there's already water there and then we're paving the whole thing, this is my-
Well, again, I, and from what we could tell, it's not ponding on our site. And I understand the, the gentleman here says that it is. But all our available information to us, city contours, our topographic survey.
We have a drainage report, I guess, already.
And we have a drainage report that Katie has reviewed separately.
And it addressed the water coming from the Roush Coleman and yours, and yours too?
Okay, so just to kind of clarify this, they're responsible for their site. And they're, all of their water is going into detention pond and it's being conveyed out to the street. The Roush Coleman development conveys the water into the kind of southeast corner of this development. They're letting that water continue to do what it's always done, which is in accordance with the drainage criteria manual. So they aren't paving, but they're accommodating all of that paving and the additional runoff with that paving. It's the Roush Coleman project water that will still continue to go where it went as if car mart never happened. Does that make sense?
I just thought that I misunderstood because I thought that we were taking care of that and this.
Because of the exist, the existing Roush Coleman development, they have agreed to take 100% of their water out to the street. They could have let more of their water go to the south because that's where it used to go. So they're overdoing their part to help with the problem. And it's, it's a problem, but it's a problem that exists. That's where the water is supposed to go.
Ben, what phase is the Roush Coleman project? Is it just starting or?
I honestly don't know.
You got any grass out there yet, sir? Mr. Larry? What, what, do you know? I mean, is it mainly lots or is it houses?
It looks like immediately to the west of us, yes, they, they've put rye grass in. And I think maybe they were paving streets today.
Okay.
But I'm not sure. They haven't started building yet.
Okay. Well, as, you know, as subdivision get grass and things that slow naturally water down, it will get better. It's about as bad as it gets now.
But-
But we're also adding roofs, right?
Correct.
We're gonna have grass, but we're adding roofs.
That's, that's a separate subdivision. That's, that's what was flowing through already.
I was just curious.
What they're saying is that property is catching all the drainage from their, from all that pavement plus drainage from the north of their property and putting it out on the street and not going down to the Sherry's property like it used to. So their fact, there's less drainage onto the Sherry property in the future after they get this built than there is right now.
That's what we think will happen.
Well, that's what engineering is telling us.
I get it. I get it. I'm sorry. I don't mean to be, I don't mean to be pushing this.
I'm sorry.
Just hear this every month, you know?
I was told by Katie that, oh, the 412 was maxed out as far as how much water it can take. And so part of that drainage back to the north was done to handle some of the water. And so you can get on the street and you see it's angled back to the north, kind of northeast there. And my question to her was what happens whenever it gets to the detention pond or end of the little turnaround? And it, there was kind of like a little ditch that went over onto car mart's land. And she said, well, that's, car mart has given us permission to allow that water to come over onto them. When the rentals owned that land, they had dug a trench and put it right in and right underneath our fence so their water would come over onto our property. So that's gone now. But whenever it comes a big rain, there'll be a, a big, almost pond of water out in front of that shop. So my question is, I don't want any more water. And if the development or if they do anything to the property, who's gonna be responsible for the water that it creates on us?
They're supposed to take care of any water that they generate off the site. That's supposedly what happens. We get a drainage report. The drainage report says that that's what's gonna happen. I guess my question should be, how can, how can car mart give another property owner an okay to put water on them that is effectively gonna end up going on their neighbor? How does, how does that work?
It's already doing that right now.
But not, but I, I, water flows that way, but when we, we concentrate it, right? When we develop something and we push it all to one side? I don't mean to sound ignorant, but if there was no problem and then something got built and we're pushing. So I'm just saying, how, how can a property owner make that arrangement? Does the city have any, do we do any, I mean, do we get to say, that's okay? You can put water onto your neighbor. I mean, like who gets to make that call? Or can property owners do that? Can they just say, you can put your water on me and that's okay?
There was a time when you could do that, when you could allow an upstream property owner to dump water on you. We called those flow easements. And eventually, as you get downstream, the water quantity is enough from some other source that it's not really noticeable. But what you're trying to do is conflate the development, which is the Roush Coleman development, and this development. This development is 100% taking care of their water and we need to approve this development. If the Roush Coleman development was done incorrectly, then we need to deal with that on that project. But that project detained, it met all of the requirements of the city's drainage criteria manual. And this one should not be held up because of that.
I got you. I agree with that. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand how we got to that, how we got to where we're at now. But yeah, I, I got you.
There's no agreement that says, yeah, it should put down more water on me than our, our ordinance doesn't allow.
And we haven't done a final plat for the Roush Coleman project yet.
No, not a final.
So we don't know that it's all put together, built like it's supposed to be yet to function as it is, which has to be approved when the final plat comes in. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, sorry for the sidebar there.
Any other comments from the audience? Please state your name and address.
Travis Scott. I'm a member of Living Savior Lutheran Church. We're immediately to the north of the project there in Georgia. I just was curious to look at the grading there, what's exactly happening at that north edge? Cause as has been mentioned, yes, drainage is a problem back there. There's a low spot back in the corner, basically where the church property southwest corner is. And up against the current state of the car mart property. So probably if I could just look at a grading plan with you sometime. So, probably if I could just look at a grading plan with you sometime.
Yeah. You still got the email?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not really touching anything on the north side over there. We're trying to leave all that area alone. As you can tell, it's all grass. So we're really not touching too much of that.
I can't see any of the labeling on there. All I can see is a blank space. I assumed you weren't doing the same, but if it's being regraded.
No, we're not touching any of that blank area. Yeah. No, the only thing we're doing is like that privacy fence and stuff like that. But I think your property is that little rectangle right there. And no, we're not, we're not touching any of that.
Any other comments from the audience? This is to the commission. The subject, motion subject to staff comments.
So motion.
Motion by Mr. Cloud.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mueller.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardell? Cloud?
Passes eight zero. Move on to L 2269, Next Air Elemental Properties. With variances, I'm sorry, did I? Yeah, I wrote, I wrote my notes on the wrong one. We'll, we'll go to L 2267, Club Car Wash, presented by Cochran Engineering.
You scared me for a minute there.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Good evening. My name is Kirk Daniels with Cochran Engineering, 8 East Main Street, Winchfield, Missouri. Along with me tonight is Justin Barnes with Club Car Wash. What we're bringing before you tonight is a large-scale development we're asking for your approval on. We're at the southeast corner of North Thompson and Sanders Street. And what we're bringing before is the automated car wash that you see here. You see in the middle is the actual automated car wash. To the west are the vac bays, vacuum bays. And on North Thompson, you see we have a right-in, right-out only. And then on Sanders Street, down to, or up to the upper right of the drawing would be a full access. And with that, I think we've worked quite a bit with city staff. I think we've addressed most of the comments. And if there's any comments additionally, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any, our staff comments?
Pretty simple, along with standard comments. They just need to add the project number L 2267 to the cover page. Land ties need to have an actual description and they sent a comment back that that's being gathered by the surveyor and will be added on the future submittals. And the only, the last comment is, is that with one handicap space, it needs to be van-accessible per ADA requirements.
Engineering comments, update, street light note. The streetlights shall be maintained by the utility company of electricity billed to the city of Springdale. Submitting no rise certification because this property to the east is affected by the floodplain. And the sidewalks along Sanders Avenue are shown in the, one foot in the existing right-of-way. They should be shown one foot inside the proposed right-of-way.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, the motion subject to staff comments. Oh, we got two variances, don't we?
No, no, they have no variances.
I'm still on the wrong one. I'm sorry. I'm really, I'm really getting on to it. Okay. This will be a motion subject to staff comments.
Is this, is this a standard design? It just seems a little complicated, but is this a standard design for the Club Car Wash? I haven't used one, so I'm just curious.
You know, they work great. I use them all the time. Of course, we work for the company. The owner is very impeccable and the flow of traffic is very important to him, so it does work very well.
Can you go to the elevations? And I can say that, working with this engineering company, they addressed everything that we asked them to. We, we went back and forth. They're asking for no variances, no waivers. They've done everything we've asked them for for that location.
And also, I married a girl from Northwest Arkansas, if that helps. It doesn't.
This will be a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Motion by Ms. Mueller.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cloud.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardell? Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
It passes eight zero.
And I, I will say that we hate to see IQ go because that's a landmark, we really do.
Sure.
Can you, can you put something up there to keep the IQ drumstick on it or something?
To do what?
Can you put a drum sticker or something on it so we remember that it was IQ from years past?
I don't know if I can agree to that right now, but...
I'm really just kidding. It's just been a landmark for a long time.
Sure. No, we've heard that and we appreciate your vote.
Thank you. All right. Now I get to go to the large-scale 2269, Next Air Elemental Properties.
Doesn't matter now.
Do what?
It doesn't matter. It's too late now.
It's too late.
Yeah, go ahead. We don't have to worry now.
We've got the variances at roofs and landscaping, 22110, and a waiver of street improvements to forward to council is 2223, presented by Crafton and Toll, the Sussex.
Connor three with Crafton Toll. About a 10,000-foot commercial building for Next Air on Thompson Street. There's three variances and one waiver with this, and I'm happy to answer any questions I have.
Staff comments?
In addition to standard comments, as you know, a developer will be required to do street improvements, including gutter and sidewalks are shown on the plans. A waiver has been requested. Roof lines are not to exceed 100 feet unbroken. A variance has been requested. Foundation landscaping is required, a variance requested. And signed design materials and placement should complement the overall architectural design of the building. Developer acknowledges and states that all building signage will meet city standards.
In addition to standard comments, the driveway radius on the south there encroaches on the adjacent property, so it needs to be shifted slightly to the north so that the tie-in on 71 does not impact the neighbor. And you need wheel stops any place that the five-foot sidewalks adjacent to parking.
Any comments from the audience? Move on to the commission. We got, we got a waiver of street improvements. It's motion forward, a motion to forward to council.
Remember, this is a state highway and they are willing to put the sidewalk in on their property. So it's just curb gutter. And I don't think the highway department will let them go back and put curbing gutter on this section of Highway 71. So it's really kind of a technicality, but they have to ask for the waiver.
Hear your motion?
What's the deal with the landscaping? We're just going to put it somewhere else?
We were just talking about the waiver first and then we'll get to the...
Oh, so I might as well.
Yeah. Do the waiver first.
Got you.
We need a call.
Need a motion? Motion to forward to council?
We'll make a motion.
And that would be to grant the waiver.
We'll make a motion to grant the waiver.
Second.
Mr. Parker, second by Ms. Mueller.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardell? Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
And that's all.
It passes eight zero. Now we can do the variances, the roofs and landscaping. Do you want to do them together?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. This will be a call for the vote.
What's the deal with the landscaping? Isn't that a good time to ask?
Yeah, because a few words I was going to, so yeah.
What's the deal? Are you just going to put it somewhere else?
So, kind of how the landscaping works on this one is, do you have a landscape plan for us? Okay. So that's what we have. And the variance for the foundation landscaping is on the eastern and southern end. And the reason for that is that it's all paved. So the eastern side has a pretty large truck well there and it ends up going to kind of a contain, it's a container pad. And that's why that's all paved. And the southern side is actually where pickup trucks and even an 18-wheeler on the eastern side can pull up, they'll wheel out these containers, put them into trucks. We've tried to over-landscape in places where we could, out front on Thompson and put more trees on the southern and eastern side as best we could. And there's a pretty decent amount of landscaping on the front there in between the sidewalk and the building.
And then talk about the roof line. It's on the backside, the side where you have those big...
Yeah, so it's the, it's the backside where the truck wells are and those tanks are. And then technically, it is on the north side. It kind of will appear that there's a break, but that side is completely flat on the northern end. That is, does have a lot of natural trees on that boundary. And I think they're planting a couple more trees to block that off. And I think that it's commercial to the north and south of this site.
This will be a call for the vote.
We do them together?
Yes. Call for the vote.
Together.
Call for the vote, Mr. Covert.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Chairman needs a break.
We need a motion. We sit, can we do a motion in a second?
Oh, okay.
For the large scale first?
We got to do the large scale.
If we hurry. We got a motion, Mr. Covert?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mueller?
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Large-scale passes eight zero.
We need a five-minute break.
And we're going to have a five-minute break. Chairman's going around.
It's usually me.
It's made for a house.
Boy, you're doing a really good job up here.
Well, thank you.
We, we mark and script these questions.
I didn't see why I was trying to get through this real quick.
While, while marking your script, you're questioning. We want you to figure out the water going uphill. Oh, you, oh, you can do that. And I know you can't.
You better let me just think that right now.
How are you doing? You're doing okay?
It is.
I don't know.
You're gonna have to. You're gonna have to bang on something.
I don't have a gavel.
He needs a gavel.
Can we get this going? Let's, let's, let's move on to L twenty-two seventy. Start events, air conditioning, air conditioning and heating expansion. Presented by James Gertz. We have a variance, a list of variances. And we have a waiver of street improvements and a waiver for projected major collector.
You got the microphone?
Thank you.
All right.
Uh, say that again. My name is James Gertz with EDA, uh, representing Mr. Sturtevant for his improvement project. Uh, here to answer any questions you may have.
Staff comments?
In addition to standard large scale development comments. A screening fence is required in accordance with chapter fifty-six. Perimeter landscaping, foundation landscaping, entryway landscaping are required. A variance has been requested for those listed landscaping requirements. Outdoor storage, trash collection, loading areas must be landscaped and out of view of adjacent properties and the public right of way. A variance has been requested. No more than sixty percent of the off-street parking area for the entire property can be located between the front facade and the public right of way. A variance has been requested. And internal pedestrian walkways, um, a continuous internal pedestrian walkway is required. Um, the walkway shall connect focal points, the pedestrian activity, and shall feature landscaped areas along no less than fifty percent of their length. The walkways must be distinguishable from driving surfaces. Uh, variance has been requested. Um, a sidewalk along the full length of the building, along any side that features a customer entrance is required. Provide at least two of the items listed under central feature and community spaces. The Springdale Commercial Design Standard, uh, variance has been requested. And for materials and colors for the building. Building sods shall include a repeating pattern. The predominant exterior building materials shall be high quality. And a variance has been requested for those materials and colors. And lighting. A lighting plan is required displaying at least one foot candle in all parking and pedestrian areas, and a variance has been requested.
In addition to, uh, standard comments, um, the street improvements are required. A waiver has been requested for, along Emma Avenue. And, um, the storm drainage spans the property line between track one and track two. And track two is currently not part of the project. So we either need to add track two as part of the project, or we need to move those improvements all onto track one. So that the, we can't end up selling one of these and the detention pond be split in half.
Any comments from the audience? This is to the commission? You wanna do the waivers first? Get them out of the way?
I have, I just have a couple of questions. What's the, what's the scope of this, this addition? Like, what's the, what are we doing?
Uh, we're adding a twelve hundred square foot, uh, addition to the existing warehouse at the back of the property. It's less than fifty percent of the square footage overall. Uh, I think we're at forty-seven percent, uh, of what we're adding. So we're adding twelve hundred. We already have a twelve hundred square foot warehouse. And the office is a fourteen hundred square foot structure. That is an existing house from long ago that got changed to, uh, an office. Maybe ten, fifteen years ago. I'm not sure exactly. Uh, we are bringing the parking lot into compliance by paving it, striping it, placing ADA spots as required. Which led us to making sure we had ADA access from the parking to the primary building. Uh, some of the variances are due to the slope challenged site that we have. We have about eleven, twelve percent slope on our driveway up to the building, up to the, the operations. Uh, I don't know if you wanna take each variance separately, or do we just wanna?
I just have, uh, I have a quick question, uh, or just a few of these. Uh, D, the outdoor storage trash collection, those dumpsters sit down by the road?
Correct. That's existing.
They can't screen those?
We are screening them. We're providing a fence and landscaping around them. But I think it's the location being in front of the building and adjacent to the right of way is the variance request.
Is that right?
Is it on a separate track too?
It is also on a separate track, uh, to the south now. The owner of this property owns both tracks. And, uh, the trash dumpsters are located on the adjacent property, which is.
That goes back to Ben's point about we just need to include the second track. Is that what we're gonna do?
I'm not quite sure what that opens up to having to do for the second tract, cuz it's primarily a single family home on about, I think it's five acres.
But it's own, the, the home itself is not zoned C two. The access point up to it is zoned C two.
Yes.
Right.
To Ben's.
You're planning on doing the screening around the dumpsters that are down there?
Yes, to try to meet commercial design standards.
What kind of, what kind of credit do they get for existing trees and screening like that? Cuz compared to like most commercial lots, it's got a pretty decent amount of trees, plus it's up the driveway. It's not a super visible site the way it is. So did we, did they get credit for that before the variant, before the variance?
Well, and I will say that EDA submitted, um, several letters and, and narratives, just kind of helping us understand this full situation and that a lot of the existing vegetation. Um, it's up to you to determine if that is sufficient screening.
Okay. And I guess the only other one that usually comes up is like lighting for, you know, just lighting in general and, you know.
Yeah, the, the owner wasn't looking to light the area up there. I can take that back to him if we need to meet the lighting requirement. But the way his operations are is, you know, uh, Monday, uh, eight till five, six at night. They don't work at night. They, all work is done off-site cuz it's AC HVAC work. Uh, they don't really have customers that come into the shop, so.
All right. I just, I need, wanted to get a couple of those things on the record.
But from a security standpoint, the area's not fenced and it's all dark.
Correct.
So for crime prevention, it probably needs some light. If somebody was up there messing around in it, it puts the police department in a bad position because it can't see anything.
How much is there existing lighting? Like, is there light, lighting, wall mounted lighting outside?
There, there actually is a pole light in the mouth that's being removed, and there are some lights on the existing buildings.
But you didn't show any of that on.
No, we unfortunately did not. The scope of this kind of crept as we did it cuz it was initially a simple addition to a building, so.
Is the parking, the new park, is that new? Separate from the main buildings? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so he was looking for some additional parking for employees. Uh, so we designated a, a, a spot that's flat and lower on the hillside and behind existing vegetation. Cuz there's a, uh, overhead electric line going through there. So it kind of met a screening requirement and was in a good place. It's relatively flat, so that's why that's there. Unfortunately, that pushes us having parking in front of the principal building. And so that's the reason for that variance.
And the waiver of the projected major collector, where's that? It's north, south?
So there is a north, south road on our far, uh, west side that's planned. Uh, so we're asking for a waiver for that. And then also the waiver for improvements on Emma due to the scope of how much we're doing compared to what the cost would be to do the improvements.
Ben, I think this is that same. Yeah, okay. You wanna address that so they, so, because that's gonna come up again.
Well, without a map, it's kind of hard to explain. But so there's, there's a north, south major collector shown from Emma that goes up to what would be Huntsville projected east. So right now Huntsville goes in a big curve, right, and you turn south. Well, there's a major collector shown going east off of that, off of Huntsville and continuing out all the way to the lake. Then there's a north, south connection from that proposed major collector, which doesn't exist today, that comes down and ties back into Butterfield Coach Road. It's parallel to Huntsville, which we got built. And it's my belief, and I think Patsy agrees, that the major collector that's immediately to the east of the road that's actually constructed is a remnant from a street map that should have been modified years ago and just never was. So we, I'm actually in favor of granting the waiver to not require that north, south major collector. I don't think it's necessary, and it would be very, it's parallel and too close to Huntsville Avenue to serve that purpose.
You wanna do these waivers? Okay. We've got W twenty-two, twenty-four waivers, waiver of street improvements on Emma. Waiver of street requirements for the projected major collector. This'll be a call for the vote.
So are we gonna take them separately?
Is this a motion to the?
This is mo- motion recommended counsel.
Motion to grant, is it, motion recommend counsel to approve these waivers.
So we're taking them both together?
Yes.
Motion to, um, send to.
Counsel.
Counsel with a recommendation for a waiver. Yes.
Motion, Ms. Mueller.
Second.
Second, uh, Mr. Covert?
Covert. Austin.
Yes.
Cordell.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
The waivers pass eight zero. Now we'll move on to the variances. How would we like to address the variances?
I'm okay with taking them all together.
Together?
My only thought is, uh, lighting. I'm cons, I mean, security lighting, I mean, I think building lighting is always a good idea when there's business. Um, just, I mean, for police, if they have to make a call to, it just, it just protects a lot of people. And I'm happy with building lighting is fine. Um, I don't know what, I mean, that's the only variance on this list that I have, you know, the biggest issue with it. Just, I think it could be a safety issue, in my opinion. If the owner was willing to, to make sure the building were, had building lighting.
Prepare the photometric plan.
Do what now?
We can prepare the photometric plan.
That'd be great.
Take some time.
Yeah.
So you're withdrawing the request for a lighting?
It sounds like we'll just crawl. That would.
Okay.
Nice taking the lighting off.
It's gonna help.
So we're doing variances A through I. This'll be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Is that Mr. Austin? Call, vote, Mr. Austin.
Cordell.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Variances A through I pass eight zero. Now we can go to the large scale. This'll be a motion subject to staff comments.
What motion?
Motion, Mr. Cloud.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mueller.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yeah.
Cordell.
Large scale passes eight zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to L twenty-two seventy-two, powers of Arkansas revised with a waiver of master street plan improvements on Kendrick Avenue presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Brandon Rush with ESI. Um, this commission saw this earlier this year and approved the project. While we were going through the bidding process and things like that, uh, Powers secured, uh, major contract. So they decided to build a slightly larger building. Um, so we came back through with that enlarged facility. Other than that, the site is pretty much identical to what was previously approved. And when we were talking to staff, we realized that we had not requested a waiver of street improvements along Kendrick Avenue previously, so that's what that's for.
Staff comments?
Besides standard comments, there is the waiver for street improvements on Kendrick.
Standard comments only. Any comments from the audience?
Ben, this one, Kendrick Avenue is a public project that's already under construction?
It's not under construction.
Okay. And they dedicated the right of way for the portion of this one already, right?
Yes.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission? You wanna do the, do the waiver? We'll start with the W twenty-two twenty-seven waiver of master street plan improvements on Kendrick Avenue. It'd be a motion to approve the waiver.
Right.
Motion, Mr. Cloud.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mueller.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cordell.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
It passes eight zero. Okay, now we'll go to the large scale. This'll be a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Covert?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mueller.
Covert.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yeah.
Cordell. Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Thank you.
We'll move on to board of adjustments. B twenty-two, one twelve hanger for Dennis Moore, presented by Jorgensen and Associates.
Or Dennis Moore.
Or Dennis Moore.
Or Dennis Moore. Maybe it doesn't say it on my sheet.
That doesn't look like Jorgensen.
No, it's one pain to come here tonight. I'm just basically trying to replace an existing hanger that was torn down by the tornado. It's on a really unique lot because it gets real skinny down there, and it's been a challenge getting it to this point. So I think I've met with the city, and I met with Ed and Patsy. Think I'm there, but gotta need, need a few variances for landscaping, do things like that.
You're making it a little bit larger than what the existing one was.
Yeah, we're sliding a little bit because it wouldn't, wouldn't work with it, but it's a hair larger than what was there. But it doesn't go over the property line or ask for any setbacks on that. And I've got the, the utilities are out there and so forth in the, in the front, which constraints a little bit about putting anything that grows up in those. So it's kind of unique, but it's, it's, uh, you know, like the hanger that y'all approved for Rower on the LSD. I'm asking for the same variances. I think that it's gonna look in compliance with all the other hangers down there. Obviously, we can't put landscaping out on the tarmac, so, um, answer any questions y'all have.
Staff comments? No staff comments?
Yeah. There is one thing to, to understand. We, we have been talking with the airport commission about creating some separate design standards for the airport commission. And I think we'll move forward with getting those put together after the first year, so we'll be able to deal with this a little bit differently. Is this prob- property actually zoned? I won?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so is it actually industrial? Yeah, so.
It's a little different.
We don't have standards for airports, but that's something we will be working on in, in the very near future, so. And it is a rebuild of one that's got blown away.
It'll look a whole lot better than what was there. It'll look better than anything else that's on that road. Not prejudiced, but it will.
Not prejudiced at all, are you?
Trust me. Yeah, it's gonna be my hanger, so.
It is his hanger, so keep that in mind. Sorry, and he's put landscaping in it, I think, to dress it to front along the street. And I think that helps that look down through there too.
That's more than what we normally get. This landscape is more than what we normally get for airport. Good job, Mr. Moore.
Comments from the audience? This is to the commission? We got a call for vote. Mr. Austin?
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cordell. Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Thank you. Variance passes eight zero. Thank you. Next is B twenty-two, one thirteen, Lucio Perez, Maldonado, and Elvia Perez, presented by Lucio Perez, Maldonado.
Hi, my name is Lucio Perez Maldonado. I'm just asking for the, uh, I just got this property originally, and I would like to get a variance for my fence. I'm gonna build from three feet to six feet on Co- uh, Butterfield Coach. I understand it's the front of the, uh, of the house, but there's a big dish there, so I don't have no access to the front on Main Road on Butterf- uh, Butterfield Coach. So I'm asking for, for permission for I can raise the fence. Now, you can see on the pictures that I did already stutter. I, I didn't know. I went to the wrong place to ask for permission. They tell me it's okay. I went to buildings, I believe. I'm new in this area. So I started doing it, and obviously somebody complained, and they, uh, they stopped me, so they sent me to do the whole thing.
Staff comments?
I think Ben has a comment.
So, um, I, I asked my staff to do the typical site triangle analysis, and, uh, they came back that the fence should be of eleven feet off of the edge of pavement. But I think Butterfield Coach is not widened in this area, so I think it probably should be eleven feet from the future pavement. Uh, if you go south, I think the road's widened. So that would be our recommendation. It, it's okay to be six feet tall, but we need it eleven feet off of the pavement so that you don't, you don't interfere with the site triangle trying to pull in and out of Quail Lane.
The whole, the whole length of that, or just like, uh, just like?
We, we probably can get a little bit closer at the end, but you can see on that map how it's widened, and then it narrows up at Butterfield Coach. So if you're eleven feet behind that, you'll be outside the right of way and should be clear for site distance.
But you're asking whether it needs to be the full depth of the lot along Butterfield Coach? How far back does that? Eleven, the entire thing needs to be eleven feet back from where he wants to put it in, all the way to the, to the edge of the lot?
I'm, I'm sure that the south end can be closer, and we, we have to work with him to get exactly what corner needs to come off.
Okay.
what corner needs to come off. I don't think that really affects you.
No.
Makes the decision on the variance easier for me. If you guys will work together and just make sure that it's all good.
Do you understand what we're, we're talking about?
Yeah, I believe it's 11 feet from the end of the road to, uh, to the line fence, uh, that's what-
Where the, where the road is widened out to the south of you, 11 feet from there, not the pavement where it is on your side, but if the road was widened out the full distance down through there?
I understand, yeah.
Okay, and the engineering office will work with you to make sure that that works all the way down through there?
Alright, appreciate it. Thank you.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, it's a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
I don't know. It's a, yeah, it's call for the vote.
Everybody's getting ready to get this done.
Who's fighting over it? Mr. Cloud?
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cordell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Passes eight-zero.
And if you'll contact the engineering office, they'll help you get that worked out.
Thank you, thank you for your vote. Appreciate it.
Next is B-22114, Towns, uh, we already did that, didn't we?
We're down to-
We're down to the, we're going down the waivers, W-2225.
Correct.
Jose and Maria Ballesteros. Waiver sidewalk requirement presented by Jose and Maria Ballesteros. Go to the mic, please.
Hi, I'm Jose Ballesteros, and, uh, I'm gonna leave on 7642 West Gibbs Road in Springdale, and I wanna, what is it, a waiver for the sidewalk?
Staff comments?
I don't recommend for waiver sidewalks, though. Ben, do you have any comments on this one?
Any comments from the audience?
I just wanna ask you guys something about, I got about 100, maybe 400 and some feet off of the, my house. It's kind of like, uh, an Eastman, so I'd like to know if I can leave a, a gravel for a while, and then I can pave it later.
Okay, you're talking about the driveway, or you're talking about the sidewalk? Because what you asked for is not to have to build sidewalk along Gibbs Road.
Yeah, we, we, I'm asking for the sidewalk. They can be without it because of all the neighborhood, they don't have any sidewalk at all. So, and I had, uh, about 410 feet or so, uh, the gravel for my property to the, to, to hit the road, the Gibbs Road, so see if I can have it for at least eight or six months that I can pave it, because I wanna pave it double, like six, like a normal, like a normal street, like 16 wide.
And do, and do you have a comment? I guess he's got paved parking? Okay.
Um, there's, there's two, two separate distinct issues. One is that he needs an approach, which is usually six inches of concrete that runs through the sidewalk that keeps the asphalt from breaking away as people pull in and out of the driveway, the city street. And the second thing he needs is a sidewalk, so. But your, the property line, as I understand it, only goes to that first pollister, right? That's another, that's your other piece of property, which you already got a waiver for, uh, waiver for. So, so, but we, we're more, you know, so the, there's two, two issues here. Does he need an approach? That's what we're talking about. He does want to put the asphalt in because he was gonna asphalt the whole thing back, but we would still require a concrete, um, approach unless you wanted to waive that.
Okay, that's not a waiver of a sidewalk requirement, that's a waiver of a street standard.
Yeah.
To do a driveway cut, which would take the concrete.
Yeah, that's of the approach, yes.
Okay, and then how wide just of an access does he have on Gibbs Road for this lot in the back?
I think it's like, uh- Thirty feet or less. No, I think it's, uh, there's sixteen.
Did you get a conditional use for a tandem lot to build it in the back? Or is it all on one lot?
No, it's, uh, two separate properties.
Okay, does anybody remember where you got a tandem lot split to allow that to go in the back?
I don't remember if there was a conditional use involved with it. I know that there was a split of some kind that resulted in them having separate properties, thus separate driveways. I think it was, uh, maybe three weeks ago, we kind of tied everything together, and that was, we know for a fact that they would need the waiver, thus their presence here, and then we had explained that in order to, uh, avoid having to get a variance or ask for a variance, they would need to, um, meet the driveway entrance requirements. I don't remember what those are off the top of my head, but all of those were included in, in the discussion and email.
Is that a, it looks like there's like a brick, sorry, I didn't get a chance to go out there, but like, just like a brick pillars for a fence right there, and it's really-
There's this for the first property, and then right beside some of the pillars, there's the entryway for the other house, for the greenhouse right there.
And is any of this holding up his C of O?
How close are you to finish?
Close to the-
House?
What do you mean that?
Is the house done, or is it close?
Oh, it's, it's gonna be done probably this month.
So he's gonna look for a C of O this month?
Yeah, so I'm gonna look for a, uh, how do you call it? Last-
Certificate of occupancy.
Yeah.
C of O.
So that way I can move in.
It's, it's your call.
I'll call for, oh, is this a call for the vote? I'll make a call for the vote.
This is a, this is a recommendation to council.
Yeah, this is a recommendation, council for a waiver.
Recommendation to council to waive the sidewalk requirement.
Okay, we have a- Call for vote from Mr. Parker.
Now, from my understanding, that's the way of the sidewalk requirement, not the street improvement, not the approach.
Yeah, he'll still have to do the concrete approach.
Okay.
Because we, that's not what we were talking about on here. Does he have to have that to get a C of O?
Yeah, but it's not that hard to pour an approach. It's not like, he doesn't even have to cut the curb. All he's gotta do is dig it out and pour.
Okay.
We need a second.
There is a sidewalk across the street, yes. We need to do his vote now.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Cloud.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cordell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller? Parker?
Yes.
Passes eight-zero.
Okay, you still have to deal with the driveway, but you don't have to do the sidewalk. It goes to council next Tuesday, but the council's the only one that can make that final decision.
So, so if you don't get the, the final, the final inspection, so still can move it in?
Not until after the council takes action on it next week.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Move on to other.
And Yumi was here, but did she go home?
Thank you.
The, uh, large-scale development plan for, uh, Via Emma, which is the one at 500 East Meadows, the corner of Park and Meadow, needs to be extended for a year. They are looking at some alternative construction methods for the actual facilities themselves, and they anticipate being able to go to construction sometime in the spring, but they need their large-scale extended for one year.
This'll be a motion?
Motion.
Extend it one year?
Motion, Mr. Covert?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mueller.
Austin?
Yes.
Cordell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes. Passes eight-zero. Planning and Directors report?
Uh, the resignings that were submitted to council were all approved. Additional uses were all approved. The replats were approved. Final plats and all the waivers were granted with some payment in lieu of, as recommended by the planning commission. I'll go over the individual ones if you need me to, but, uh, the 2023 budget was approved, and with that was an increase to, uh, planning commission compensation to $424 a month or $5,088 annually. Those will go into effect with your first payment in January. Uh, they approved a change order for water improvements related to the Roseback Greenway realignment, approved some Act 9 bonds for Today's Power, which is a solar generation facility on land leased from the Springdale School District just outside of Sonora Middle School, kind of an interesting approach. Uh, they authorized purchase of two snow plows, one you know so we'll get snow removed if it snows. Uh, they, uh, accepted the guaranteed maximum price for the construction of Luther George Park, which means construction for major improvements can get in the way soon, and authorized a contract for the construction of Dixie Land Road Extension, which I think there's been a group that's been looking for that for quite some time. Um, no work session this month. The Christmas gathering will be from six to eight on Tuesday, the 20th, at the Great American Stakeout.